I would like to now call the meeting, the school board meeting tonight, Salem Kaiser School Board. All members are present. So, let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda modifications besides the fact that we do not have an executive session tonight? Superintendent Perry? Nope. Anyone else? Agenda modifications? All right. Moving on, the next item would be the Spotlight on Success, which is on hiatus. And now it's time for audience communication, public comment. There are none. Okay. Well, then, save that speech. Okay.
Paul, you have to do real call.
No, we did. We announced that everyone was present.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to?
No.
You want to say aye? Okay.
I want to say no a lot.
I'm waiting for that, Jim. It's coming. Your opportunity is coming. Okay, there's no audience communication, okay. The first action item is the swearing in of newly-elected school board members, and that would be Paul Decopoulos. How do you want to do it?
So, we're going to just start with Director Kylo by the flag.
Okay.
Need pictures? Pictures.
I, Paul Kylo, solemnly swear, I, Paul Kylo, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof, and the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director, and I will faithfully execute the duties of school board director in and for the Salem Kaiser School District, in and for the Salem Kaiser School District, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you. Raise your right hand. Good afternoon. I, Jesse Lippold.
I, Jesse Lippold.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board director.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
If and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
In and for.
In.
The Salem Kaiser School District, to the best of my ability.
The Salem Kaiser School District, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ronan and Kenny. I, Sharon Blossom.
I, Sharon Blossom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ronan and Kenny. I, Sharon Blossom.
I, Sharon Blossom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ronan and Kenny. I, Sharon Blossom.
I, Sharon Blossom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of school director.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
In and for the Salem Kaiser School District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be the election of school board chair for 2017-18 school year. Do we have any nominations? Director Hyen?
I'd like to nominate Paul Kylo.
Second.
Okay.
Third.
Okay, good. That was good. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will, without objection, I will close nominations. I guess we have ballots that we can vote on, and Paul will count them. So, mark your ballots, please. And pass them down. Should be a tough one to count, Paul.
He went to law school.
I know. That's why I said it should be a tough one to count. He didn't go to math school. While you're, I don't know, should we do the vice chair?
I think he has to read them out, because it has to be public.
Okay. Can't just say 2017.
Do you want to, do you need to say them out loud?
Yes.
Okay.
Let the record reflect that each director has cast their ballot for Paul Kylo.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, fellow board members. They're going to help us all. Oh, did I say that aloud? Now, it's time to elect the board vice chair for 2017-18. Are there any nominations? Mr. Green?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Chuck Lee from the great city of Kaiser for vice chair for the Salem Kaiser School District.
Okay. Second? All right. Sharon seconds. Any other nominations for vice chair? Going once? Twice? Okay. Nominations are closed. All of those favor, or all of those, please vote for Mr. Lee. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that Chuck Lee has received votes from all board members.
Great. Thank you. Congratulations. The next item is the fiber intergovernmental agreement with the city of Kaiser. Mr. Wolf, would you like to take stand?
Yes. Good evening, and congratulations, Superintendent Perry, Chair Kylo, and members of the board. Tonight, you have for action an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Kaiser and the district. Just as a little background, over the past several months, the district and the city of Kaiser have been working on an agreement to facilitate the implementation of a district-owned fiber optic network using city right-of-way. A little deeper background on this project, the district applied for and received a grant from the federal government. It's basically a little over a $15 million grant to install and operate a fiber optic network throughout the district. And so, that's a little over a $15 million grant. It's an 80 percent reimbursable grant, which means the district's total investment for this $15 million network is approximately $3 million. And we've negotiated a similar IGA with the city of Salem, and this IGA with Kaiser is essentially the same agreement that the previous board had approved for the city of Salem. So, we bring this to you tonight with the recommendation that you approve this IGA and authorize the chief operations officer to take the necessary steps and actions to execute the fiber project.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wolf? Any questions? Any questions? Okay. I will now entertain a motion to accept the intergovernmental agreement.
So moved.
Mr. Lee, thank you.
Second.
Second. Director Hyen? Hyen? So, any other discussion? Discussion? Nope. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item C, let me share my, I just have a couple of questions. Do we know how much we spent last year on this, on our legal services?
Yes, approximately $460,000. Do you want broken out a little bit more?
Yeah, if you can.
So, not, this aren't going to add up to the 460, but they're close.
That's fine.
So, around 99 in personnel-type items, 82 in special ed, 54 in retainer, and then there's 102 related to things like this fiber project, some land use, public information request type things.
Okay. And then, in past years, we've been given, the agreement is separate, right?
Yes, and it's at your board.
It's here.
Spot.
And the rates, are these the correct rates? And are, in section?
Yes.
Four? Four point?
4.3.
4.1, 4.3, yes. Those are the correct rates?
Yes.
Because last year, we were given a document with the incorrect rate.
Yes.
And I just wanted to make sure.
And they've not been raised since last year.
They have not been raised. Okay. And my next question is, can, do we know, who negotiated this agreement?
This agreement?
This agreement.
I did.
This contract? You did?
It's the same agreement that we've moved forward from last year.
Okay. And who negotiated the one the year before?
I did.
Okay. And the year before? When is, when was the last time this was actually negotiated? Maybe Mr. Decopoulos knows.
This has been in different formats. Probably, there was a major change during the time that Superintendent Husk was here, and I, but the most major change was with, with your current superintendent.
And what was that change?
We specified in more detail that what we would describe as general services or special services. We also talked about the rates, which had not been raised in some time, and the general retainer amount, which had been static for almost a decade.
And to differentiate amounts depending on who was prac, who was handling the case.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That answers my questions. Any other questions? Anyone? Chuck?
Just out of curiosity, Paul, how long have you been the legal counsel for this organization?
Since the early 90s. In fact, I recognize Director Lippold's father as a person that I dealt with way back in the early 90s on a school district matter. And so, I've had the honor to be able to serve this board and this district for many years.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. I will now entertain a motion to accept the contract for legal services.
I'll make a motion that we accept the contract.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Sharon, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. The next item would be the curriculum adoption, so reading, and Eric Richards?
So, as he comes forward, I just want to note that we, as we've started looking at this curriculum adoption, we have, we would like to consider moving the timeline along a little bit. Usually, we come as a first and second reading, and this was really posted as a reading tonight. So, if we have any special meeting between now and the business meeting in August, I'm going to ask that we bring this forward as an action item, so we can expedite purchasing. So, go ahead, Eric.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, and members of the board. I'm Eric Richards. I'm the director of student services for the district. A little bit over a year ago, I believe in May of 2016, we engaged a very highly-respected outside consultant. Her name is Patricia Hagan Gilden. She was previously director of special education in Tiger-Tualton School District and has twice served as the director of the Office of Special Education at the Oregon Department of Education. And her charge was to conduct a comprehensive evaluation of our special education department and our special education services in the district. So, Patricia worked very hard on that across the past nine months, and her work culminated in a set of comprehensive recommendations to help us redesign special education in the district. Along the way, we had conversations with Patricia and had some ideas of some of the recommendations that might come forward, and one of them was the need to secure and adopt curriculum for our developmental learning center and life skill program students. And so, that's why we're here before you tonight. And I would like to introduce to you Mr. Brian Hilsabek, who is a student services coordinator, who was assigned the lead role in researching, reviewing, and leading the process for our final recommendation on the curriculum that we're bringing forward to you. And he'll tell you about that process, as well as some of the reasons why we bring this recommendation to you tonight. So, Brian?
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Superintendent Perry, Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, and board directors. My name is Brian Hilsabek, and I'm a special ed administrator with the Salem Kaiser Public Schools. I'm here this evening to seek approval from the board on adoption of curriculum for Salem Kaiser Public School students being educated in our developmental learning center classrooms and our life skills classrooms. These students are working towards alternative learning standards and may be receiving extended diploma or certificate. All of the students who access this curriculum are students who have been identified as students with special needs. This curriculum will serve approximately about 728 students in the district. Pursuant to Quality Assurance Model Procedure Instruction Materials Selection (CURP 001), line 3.7 of that procedure states, "In accordance with School Board Executive Limitation Policy 11," which focuses on academic program, instructional materials proposed for purchase are presented to the school board for adoption. Prior to moving forward with purchasing, we need a board approval. This spring, the district budget included funds for purchase of these types of instructional materials. Although Oregon Department of Education does not require a formal adoption process for special education curriculum and materials, we chose to follow the Quality Assurance Model Procedures related to selection of curriculum materials by the school district. As was mentioned in your board packet, this is the first such adoption I know of for specific curriculum to serve this population of students in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We went through an extensive vetting process, seeking guidance, input, feedback from teachers, building administrators, curriculum and instruction department, classified and licensed staff, and community members and parents. The process included the following. We conducted a survey of our current classroom curriculums for our teachers who teach in our developmental learning center classrooms. We met with principal, building principals and assistant principals who serve these classrooms in their school buildings with the purpose of seeking feedback on the type of curriculums that we give consideration to. Student Services Department began conducting research on curriculum options, particularly ones that provide a robust K21 pathway that includes science, social studies, English Language Arts, reading and writing, math, functional life skills, and transition skills with other extended learning opportunities. Student Services Department met with Curriculum Instruction Assessment Department to make sure we understood the curriculum adoption procedures as is outlined in policy CURP 001. Student Services Department held a one-and-a-half-hour webinar with Unique Learning Systems, was one of the curriculums that we were considering. We invited and had participation from licensed staff, both special education teachers and related service providers, building administrators, curriculum instruction and assessment department staff, classified staff, parents, and outside agency personnel. We had approximately 38 participants. Feedback from a survey taken after the presentation was very positive on Unique Learning Systems. However, many participants wanted to know what other kind of curriculum options or similar to Unique Learning System was available. So, we conducted some more research and found ABLENet Inc., which is another curriculum similar to Unique Learning Systems. We contacted ABLENet Inc., and they sent us curriculum materials for review. We put together a curriculum review to compare Unique Learning Systems and ABLENet Inc. side-by-side. We developed a rubric of 14 standards and had participants rate each curriculum against the other. The consensus was that the Unique Learning Systems curriculum met all 14 standards at a high level. That's a three or a four, the majority being at the four level. In mid to late June, we published a public notice in the Statesman Journal, providing notice that Salem Kaiser Public School is considering adopting curriculum, and we're seeking community input on both ABLENet Inc. and the Unique Learning Systems curriculums. The public notice was published in the internet version, both the internet version and the print version of the Statesman Journal on four occasions. No one came to review those materials. Feedback from the community members who attended the curriculum review was that they wanted to provide another opportunity for parents to review Unique Learning Systems, as this appeared to be the curriculum option with the highest consensus from the curriculum review. I worked with FACT, the family and community together, it's just FACT Oregon, and creating Opportunities, which is two agencies, local community agencies, serving families and students with special needs, to put out an invitation on their social media to invite them to review Unique Learning Systems curriculum on July 6th at Student Services Center. We had six participants who attended the July 6th participation. The feedback and comments were very positive about what Unique Learning System has to offer our students, families, and teachers. In the end, based on approximately 14 standards, of which eight are required criteria of the Instructional Materials Selection Procedure (CURP 001), the review committee's consensus was to recommend Unique Learning Systems. I believe you have a curriculum review rubric in your board packet detailing the feedback. We compared a curriculum, we compared the curriculums of vendors ABLENet and Unique Learning Systems. So, what does Unique Learning Systems offer our students, families, and teachers? The curriculum is a comprehensive, is comprehensive and includes all core areas plus more. The curriculum is age-respectful and based on chronological age materials, not developmental age. The curriculum addresses the district's responsibility to provide learning materials related to the common core, and in this case, students working towards alternative learning standards. The curriculum is highly adaptable and requires little to no modification as the materials come prepared with three different learning levels. The curriculum provides a format to express information to families and explain about activities or learning experiences in order to support alignment of communication throughout the district. The curriculum comes in a blended format, providing both print-based materials and computer-based materials, highly interactive, highly engaging. For our teachers, it will provide more time to focus on student instruction and less time developing their own curriculum. I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Questions? Jim?
I have a series of questions, if that's all right, Mr. Chair.
That's just fine.
So, first, I look at the cloud-based learning rubric that you gave us here, and what I see is elementary. Were there other grade levels?
That's a K21 curriculum.
Okay.
Dr. Green, one of the implications that we work with with our students is we're talking about students who have significant cognitive delays, and the methods and the materials that we use to teach them are based on the grade level standards. They're centralized standards, so they're reduced in breadth, depth, and complexity. The other thing is that this is just one piece of that curriculum. If you were to look at the full curriculum in its entirety, it addresses all subject areas that are related to a student's age and not elementary or not watered down, I prefer to say.
The other thing in the walk-in packet here at the board plate, you indicated that you put together a curriculum review and participants rated the curriculum. Who participated in that rating? Specifically, what grade level? And were they licensed, classified administrators? Can you give me an example?
They were licensed teachers. So, we had also related service providers, so licensed special ed teachers, kindergarten, high school, middle school. There were related service providers, all com specialists, speech-language pathologists. I think there were some classified occupational therapists assistants also participated. We had program assistants participating. And then, that review, FACT Oregon was there, Creating Opportunities were there. There are also community members and parents as well that participated in that. So, approximately 30 to 32 folks attended that.
And the final one I have, Mr. Chair, is the curriculum language and culture appropriate for our students who don't have English as their primary language?
Yes. Yes, it can be. We can easily adapt those materials and provide translation to those materials.
Because I want to make sure this one's right. Because the other, the other recent curriculum purchase we did was not correct.
Mm-hmm.
I'm still very upset with Pearson over that. I want to make sure if we're going to spend money on this, that our students who are special education identified and don't speak English as their primary language, this curriculum will work for them.
Yes, it will, sir. Dr. Green?
Okay. Jesse, then Kathy.
Yeah, I have a question as well. So, looking at the scoring for these two curriculums, it seems that ABLENet is almost a level two on almost everything, was unique, is scores level four, level five?
That's correct.
Are there any other curriculums that are close to ABLENet?
There are other curriculums that are close to ABLENet. There are, it's hard to find curriculums that develop robust curriculums like Unique Learning Systems that provides the complexity and the broadness that this curriculum provides for our students. ABLENet didn't meet the mark on a lot of areas because it wasn't robust enough. It didn't, it went up to about middle school age. It was very hard to, it would have been very hard to, again, we would have been modifying curriculum again and again and again for our older age students. So, the Unique Learning Systems, Director Lippold was the ability to expand at K21, which provides consistency as a child goes through the Salem Kaiser Public School system. The other thing that I'll bring to your attention is that this curriculum, if a student moves out of state and another district is using that curriculum, that stuff, they can pull that curriculum in and continue on. As our students go through the grade bands in this curriculum, so from transition from third grade to fourth grade into our fifth grade into middle school, and then our high school into our community transition programs, the curriculum follows them along. A lot of times, we have, we're starting over at the beginning of the school year when students transition from classroom to classroom. We want to stop that practice and just continue on so we can, we can start off right away. Hopefully, that answered your question, Mr. Lippold.
Yeah, so, from getting here, so, there's, there's no other, are these like the only two companies that are, like, are these the top ones?
Yeah. Those are the ones where all the research that we, we did that are that comprehensive and Unique Learning Systems is a step above in terms of what we need to serve our population of students.
Thank you. Is that it? Kathy?
I would be very interested in knowing what other districts in Oregon have adopted Unique. Have we spoken with teachers that have actually taught with that system in other districts?
Actually, Director Goss, we even have current educators right now in Salem Kaiser that use some of the materials in their classrooms in Salem Kaiser School District. South Salem High School uses some of the materials in their developmental learning centers. They went ahead and purchased the curriculum on their own. Leslie Middle School in our school district uses the same, same curriculum for some of their students. Same thing over at West High School and our developmental learning center. What, how I became involved in the Unique Learning Systems was, we went up to
This evening to seek approval from the board on adoption of curriculum for Salem Kaiser Public School students. Being educated in our developmental learning center classrooms and our life skills classrooms. These students are working towards alternative learning standards and may be receiving extended diploma or certificate. All of the students who access this curriculum are students who have been identified as students with special needs. This curriculum will serve approximately about seven hundred and twenty-eight students in the district. Pursuant to quality assurance model procedure, instruction material selection C U R P zero zero one, line three point seven of that procedure states, "In accordance with school board executive limitation policy eleven, which focuses on academic program, instructional materials proposed for purchase are presented to the school board for adoption." Prior to moving forward with purchasing, we need a board approval. This spring, the district budget included funds for purchase of these types of instructional materials. Although Oregon Department of Education does not require a formal adoption process for special education curriculum and materials, we chose to follow the quality assurance model procedures related to selection of curriculum materials by the school district. As was mentioned in your board packet, this is the first such adoption I know of for specific curriculum to serve this population of students in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We went through an extensive vetting process, seeking guidance, input, feedback from teachers, building administrators, curriculum and instruction department, classified and licensed staff, and community members and parents. The process included the following: We conducted a survey of our current classroom curriculums for our teachers who teach in our developmental learning center classrooms. We met with principal, building principals and assistant principals who serve these classrooms in their school buildings with the purpose of seeking feedback on the type of curriculums that we give consideration to. Student services department began conducting research on curriculum options, particularly ones that provide a robust K twenty-one pathway that includes science, social studies, English, language arts, reading and writing, math, functional life skills, and transition skills with other extended learning opportunities. Student services department met with curriculum instruction and assessment department to make sure we understood the curriculum adoption procedures as is outlined in policy C U R P zero zero one. Student services department held a one and a half hour webinar with unique learning systems was one of the curriculums that we were considering. We invited and had participation from licensed staff, both special education teachers and related service providers, building administrators, curriculum instruction and assessment department staff, classified staff, parents, and outside agency personnel. We had approximately thirty-eight participants. Feedback from a survey taken after the presentation was very positive on unique learning systems. However, many participants wanted to know what other kind of curriculum options are similar to unique learning system was available. So we conducted some more research and found ABLENET Inc., which is another curriculum similar to unique learning systems. We contacted ABLENET Inc. and they sent us curriculum materials for review. We put together a curriculum review to compare unique learning systems and ABLENET Inc. side by side. We developed a rubric of fourteen standards and had participants rate each curriculum against the other. The consensus was that the unique learning systems curriculum met all fourteen standards at a high level. That's a three or a four, the majority being at the four level. In mid to late June, we published a public notice in the Statesman Journal providing notice that Salem Kaiser Public School is considering adopting curriculum and we're seeking community input on both ABLENET Inc. and the unique learning systems curriculums. The public notice was published in the internet version, both the internet version and the print version of the Statesman Journal on four occasions. No one came to review those materials. Feedback from the community members who attended the curriculum review was that they wanted to provide another opportunity for parents to review unique learning systems as this appeared to be the curriculum option with the highest consensus from the curriculum review. I worked with FACT, the family and community together, it's just FACT Oregon, and Creating Opportunities, which is two agencies, local community agencies serving families and students with special needs, to put out an invitation on their social media to invite them to review unique learning systems curriculum on July sixth at Student Services Center. We had six participants who attended the July sixth participation. The feedback and comments were very positive about what unique learning system has to offer our students, families, and teachers. In the end, based on approximately fourteen standards, of which eight are required criteria of the instructional material selection procedure C U R dash P zero zero one, the review committee's consensus was to recommend unique learning systems. I believe you have a curriculum review rubric in your board packet detailing the feedback. We compared the curriculum of vendors ABLENET and unique learning systems. So what does unique learning systems offer our students, families, and teachers? The curriculum is comprehensive and includes all core areas plus more. The curriculum is age respectful and based on chronological age materials, not developmental age. The curriculum addresses the district's responsibility to provide learning materials related to the common core and in this case, students working towards alternative learning standards. The curriculum is highly adaptable and requires little to no modification as the materials come prepared with three different learning levels. The curriculum provides a format to express information to families and explain about activities or learning experiences in order to support alignment of communication throughout the district. The curriculum comes in a blended format, providing both print-based materials and computer-based materials, highly interactive, highly engaging. For our teachers, it will provide more time to focus on student instruction and less time developing their own curriculum. I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Questions? Jim?
I have a series of questions, if that's all right, Mr. Chair. So first, I look at the cloud-based learning rubric that you gave us here, and what I see is elementary. Were there other grade levels?
That's a K twenty-one curriculum. Dr. Green, one of the implications that we work with with our students is we're talking about students who have significant cognitive delays. And the methods and the materials that we use to teach them are based on the grade level standards. They're centralized standards, so they're reduced in breadth, depth, and complexity. The other thing is that this is just one piece of that curriculum. If you were to look at the full curriculum in its entirety, it addresses all subject areas that are related to a student's age and not elementary or not watered down, per se.
The other thing in the walk-in packet here at the board plate, you indicated that you put together a curriculum review and participants rated the curriculum. Who participated in that rating, specifically what grade level? Were they licensed, classified administrators? Can you give me an example?
They were licensed teachers. So we had also related service providers, so licensed special ed teachers, kindergarten, high school, middle school. There were related service providers, all com specialists, speech language pathologists. I think there were some classified occupational therapists assistants also participated. We had program assistants participating in that review. FACT Oregon was there, creating opportunities were there. There are also community members and parents as well that participated in that. So approximately thirty to thirty-two folks attended that.
And the final one I have, Mr. Chair, is the curriculum language and culture appropriate for our students who don't have English as their primary language?
Yes, it can be. We can easily adapt those materials and provide translation to those materials.
Because I want to make sure this one's right. Because the other recent curriculum purchase we did was not correct. I'm still very upset with Pearson over that. I want to make sure if we're going to spend money on this, that our students who are special education identified and don't speak English as their primary language, this curriculum will work for them.
Yes, it will, sir. Dr. Green.
Jesse, then Kathy?
Yeah, I have a question as well. So looking at the scoring for these two curriculums, it seems that ABLENET is almost a level two on almost everything was unique. It scores level four, level five.
That's correct.
Are there any other curriculums that are close to ABLENET?
There are other curriculums that are close to ABLENET. There are, it's hard to find curriculums that develop robust curriculums like unique learning systems that provides the complexity and the broadness that this curriculum provides for our students. ABLENET didn't meet the mark on a lot of areas because it wasn't robust enough. It didn't, it went up to about middle school age. It was very hard to, it would have been very hard to, again, we would have been modifying curriculum again and again and again for our older age students. So the unique learning systems, Director Lipold, was the ability to expand at K twenty-one, which provides consistency as a child goes through the Salem Kaiser Public School system. The other thing that I'll bring to your attention is that this curriculum, if a student moves out of state and another district is using that curriculum, that stuff, they can pull that curriculum in and continue on. As our students go through the grade bands in this curriculum, so from transition from third grade to fourth grade into our fifth grade into middle school, and then our high school into our community transition programs, the curriculum follows them along. A lot of times, we are starting over at the beginning of the school year when students transition from classroom to classroom. We want to stop that practice and just continue on so we can start on right away. Hopefully, that answered your question, Mr. Lipold?
Yeah, so before we get in here, so there's no other, are these like the only two companies that are, like, are these the top ones?
Those are the ones with all the research that we did that are that comprehensive. And unique learning systems is a step above in terms of what we need to serve our population of students.
I would be very interested in knowing what other districts in Oregon have adopted unique. Have we spoken with teachers that have actually taught with that system in other districts?
Actually, Director Goss, we even have current educators right now in Salem Kaiser that use some of the materials in their classrooms in Salem Kaiser School District. South Salem High School uses some of the materials in their developmental learning centers. They went ahead and purchased the curriculum on their own. Leslie Middle School in our school district uses the same curriculum for some of their students. Same thing over at West High School in our developmental learning center. What, how I became involved in the unique learning systems was we went up to a curriculum workshop at Multnomah E S D. And they brought this curriculum to our attention, serving our life skills classrooms. That's where we first started. They were going through the implementation process. I think they were in year two. And what we've seen is the curriculum has continued to expand and become more robust than it was back then. So they were pleased with their outcomes. L.A. Unified School District out of state has adopted this curriculum as their base curriculum for those classrooms. Houston Independent School District has also done the same. So our teachers even internally have, are, were involved in the review committee. We're positive about what the potential is for this curriculum to serve our students in Salem Kaiser Public Schools.
You mentioned other high schools, other middle schools. What about the elementary level?
I believe, I don't believe they're using unique learning systems. They may be using some pieces of it, but I don't think they've done a full implementation, full use of all the curriculum. This is a pretty expansive curriculum, and I don't believe they've gotten into the full package of what it is able to offer. They may use pieces of it or have used pieces of it.
Jim?
Sorry, I do have a follow-up. I was just wondering, since this will be a brand-new curriculum, what are the professional development opportunities for our staff, both licensed and classified, in implementing this curriculum?
So part of the package that was submitted to the district this last spring was, part of that was bringing a trainer out from unique learning systems. That was part of the curriculum package, a one-time training to get us off the ground, to bring teachers, fifty-two teachers on, hopefully in August, we'll see, and to provide a day of training to them. Part of the package also included webinars, specific webinars to implementation of the curriculum throughout the school year, year one and year two. So that's a two-year package that we put together. So there'll be those training opportunities. We will put together a strategic plan on measuring targets that we want to hit with our teachers. This will obviously not be a full implementation year one, but it'll be a release of responsibility for teachers to work towards implementation by the end of the year. And we will have a strategic plan to direct that, those outcomes and those strategic targets that we want to hit with our teachers.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
I do. I have a question. I want to make sure I understood what you told Jim. It's, did I hear you, did I understand you to say we're buying this program in, it's in English? And then we'll modify it to fit other cultures and other languages?
Yes, we can, certainly.
Do we have the resources within your department to make those modifications?
We certainly can. Okay, go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead.
Yes, we can. I think we can. Obviously, we'll have to look at that and do that. It doesn't come in Spanish, but it has the opportunity, the complexity of the language, let's say in terms of Ready Gen. So the complexity of the language is much less. If you see some of the materials that you're looking at, a lot of our students use symbols and not actual words. And so the complexity of the language is much less. So we could have instructional aides that can do that as well and that are of that language. So I think we can do that.
To maintain the integrity of the materials, do we need to continue working with the company to make sure that our interpretations and translations are correct? To fit the research and to fit the model?
Yes, we would. Actually, I think...
Is that part of what we're buying, that continuing cooperation?
Yes, I think so. And by Salem Kaiser being a part of that curriculum adoption, I would imagine L.A. Unified School District and the students that they serve, I would imagine Houston Independent School District with the students that they serve would be big players in this and pushing that conversation.
Any other questions?
One thing that I'd like to go back on, in the elementary level, having been around these programs, sometimes they require a lot of supplementary material.
Exactly.
And hard materials. Is that what we're buying with this as well?
No, this would be our base curriculum. And we have, already have supplementary materials already useful in the classroom. For example, some of our students are participating in what we call a STAR curriculum, which is discrete trial pivotal response training type of curriculum. They will still need that, but this is our base and this is where we start from. It's a thematic-based curriculum that focuses on science and social studies and then interweaves our reading, writing, and math within that. It's more thematic-based than it is subject-based.
Any other questions? Jesse?
Have we had anybody look at it who would be a part of helping turn this curriculum for our students who don't speak English? Have we had anybody look at it and said, yes, we could do this?
I haven't had any conversations with anybody specifically regarding that piece of it. I will say to you, Director Lipold, one of the things that we do on a regular basis is we translate IEP documents into Spanish for native language speakers, Spanish being the primary one. So we're pretty good at accessing who we need to access and being able to do that and do it in a manner that is respectful to the curriculum and making sure the meaning is coming across that way. We do that on a regular basis.
Questions? Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay, next on the agenda would be the report on EL one.
All right, so this is executive limitation report number one, global executive constraint. And since we have a number of new board members, I think it's a point in time for us to ask ourselves the question. I put information forward as we've done in the past, but I think it's time to ask ourselves the question, is this the right information to tell you that I'm meeting your expectations around this executive limitation? I'd like to do this throughout the year with each of them, some in a different varying degree of complexity than others. This one has three. So that's where I'd like to start this conversation because you have seen this document. And you could either open it up to questions or items or move it to a work session. It would be at your discretion.
Anyone have a thought they'd like to share on this? Mr. Oh, Jesse?
Yeah, I would like to request a work session to go over the executive limitations.
Anyone disagree with the request? Without objection, we will then move this to our next work session.
And could I ask people or board members to look at the executive limitation and begin to think about and even email me some suggestions about what types of things might you like in here? Or if you want to have more conversation with me ahead of it to get your thinking around what kinds of things could be evidence for these items? If not, we'll have the topic at the work session.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Could I suggest maybe Superintendent Perry, maybe send out some of our past executive limitation reports? Because this is kind of one of the smaller ones. This one and the next one tend to be the lighter of the executive limitations. I'm not saying all of them, but one that has a little bit more on it so that our new board members could review those to see what we've looked at in the past as a board.
That's great.
If there's something on a bigger issue they want different information about or we as a board want different information, it might not be bad to have a look at a little bit broader EL.
Probably not EL two.
Okay. Any other discussion about this? Okay, thank you. The next item would be the list of meetings. I would point out that July twenty-fifth, we will have a work session, which will be at six o'clock in the evening. We will not be starting at eight a.m. So it'll be six p.m. and it will be here.
Could I ask for clarification on that?
Sure.
What would you think about making it a very short business meeting to have a second reading and action on the curriculum adoption?
Any objections?
Ms. Chair, I won't be here for that meeting. I have a prior work commitment.
So are you object, I was gonna say, have you objected?
No, I'm not objecting. I'm fine with the curriculum.
And I believe that is acceptable to the board. I'm not hearing any objections. So we will have a short business meeting on that night as well as a work session regarding EL one and one other. And I would also like to remind the board that we're adding an August twelfth board meeting. One other. We haven't discussed it yet. Okay, and then the rest of those dates, please get them on your calendar. All right, and now we are up to public comment, I believe, or audience communication on non-agenda items. And we have one person who's signed up. So if Mindy Merritt would come forward. And Mindy's a frequent flyer here. But as you know, you have three minutes. The light starts, the light goes off at two minutes. At three minutes, you'll be cut off. Please give us your name, address, and Paul, you ready? Okay, we want that loud to cut her off at three minutes.
That's right, that's right.
New administration here.
Gotta be tough, gotta be tough. All right, ready?
Time starts now.
Set, go. Superintendent Perry, Board Chair Kylo, Vice Chair Lee, and members of the board. My name is Mindy Merritt and I reside at two-three-eight One Teal Drive Southeast. And I'm here tonight as the president of Salem Kaiser Education Association. First, we'd like to welcome the new board members. As an association, we look forward to working with all of you to ensure that all Salem Kaiser students receive a quality and equitable public school education. In June, the Oregon House approved the state school fund at eight point two billion for the biennium. I have to admit, a part of me was relieved. However, I quickly realized that this still leaves us hundreds of millions of dollars short of the funding that schools need in order to provide the education that our students deserve. It is my hope that together, our association and the district will continue to advocate for the importance of stable and adequate funding for our schools. This school board recently adopted a budget that reflected funding at eight point one billion, which reflected a number of cuts and reductions to include twenty-five point two-five FTEs were eliminated from elementary instruction, which will greatly impact class size and student learning. The instructional reserve intended to support schools with the greatest need was reduced from fifteen FTE to only ten FTE. Middle school instruction reflected a reduction of sixteen point three-five FTE. High school instruction will experience a reduction of fifteen point oh-two FTE, which will greatly impact the class size and student need. Three FTE positions, curriculum program assistant positions, were eliminated. Two of those FTEs were specifically for the support of science. A full-time program assistant position was eliminated from testing services. And three full-time TIs, effective learning teacher positions, were also eliminated. Overall, the approved budget of eight point one billion left our members with fifty-six point six-two less FTE that directly supported our classrooms and impacts our ability to serve our students. With an increase in funding at the state level from eight point one billion to eight point two billion, this will create an opportunity for this school board to address some of these cuts. This increase, by our estimation, provides an approximate increase of three point five million to the Salem Kaiser School District budget each year of the biennium. Just using about half of this money to increase the number of instructors in the school district would restore between fifteen and twenty FTE. An increase of just one FTE in any building can have a substantial impact on multiple classrooms and a benefit to students. A simplified example to think of is one FTE in a second-grade classroom could be the difference of having one hundred second graders in three classes of thirty-three or thirty-four students to having only twenty-five if they're divided in four classes. That's a big deal for the kids and for the teachers. At the secondary level, that FTE impact could be similarly spread out over core subjects or increasing FTE can create additional elective opportunities so that every student might have an opportunity to find what hooks them into their learning and keeps them engaged. As the association president, I ask you to consider the hundreds of students within our district that you can impact by restoring some of these classroom positions.
Thank you. Next time we subtract the after ten seconds, so don't worry.
I told you, you guys made some mistake. That was the problem. Seeing no one else, any board activities you would like to report on at this time? Mr. Lee?
Excuse me. I know I'm probably a little prejudiced, but I keep being amazed at the great things Karina Lee and the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation are doing. I don't know if you're aware of it, but SCEFF was able to get an ambulance donated to their foundation from an agency down in Southern California. Joe Egley, one of the board members, flew down and drove it back. With the help of fast signs and in-house graphics, the whole exterior of this ambulance has been redone to reflect the bazillion books message that's going on. And this ambulance has been converted into a bookmobile. And as you know, SCEFF has got thousands of books to distribute for free. And so on Saturday night of this past week, the bookmobile was down at Riverfront Park at the movie that they had at the amphitheater, gave away hundreds of books there. And then the next day, on Sunday, they were giving away free books at Marion County Fair. So it's just very creative and you'll see this beautiful ambulance. They park it down at the riverfront down there in the parking lot. So keep your eyes open for it. It's a great addition and a great way to promote literacy in our community.
Anyone else? We all survived our graduations. Some of us better than others. Superintendent comments?
So, welcome to our new board members. Welcome back to our veteran board members. And nice job on the public comment tonight. He's setting that, really wasn't picking on Mindy, it was just setting the standard for public comment. I wanted to just alert the board to our summer graduation ceremony, which I believe is on August third. I will have Alice send you an appointment if it...
I'll be there.
And Director Kylo will be there, Chair Kylo will be there. We intentionally take the time to honor the kids who couldn't walk across the graduation stage at their home high school and have come back in the summer to finish their credits. And this is our way to put on their cap and gown and honor them. If you have a chance and haven't attended summer graduation, it's an awesome one to attend. If not this year, there'll be one every year after this. So it's great to have a few board members there. It's a really great honor. Parents especially are thrilled. So mark your calendars. We'll send you some more information about that.
That's it?
That's it for me.
Okay, with that, I believe we are adjourned.